Project. So, does, do we have?
Motion to open the hearing.
Motion to open the hearing, yes. For 735, 737 Columbia Street, a site plan application from Kula Ba, which is changing Ventures LLC, to convert an existing auto service center into a bar, restaurant, and brewery with an event space. Do I have a motion to open the hearing? Board. Thank you, Laura. Do I have a second?
A second.
Thanks, Clark. Okay. Who's presenting?
Hi, I'm Christina.
Christina.
Hi.
So, go ahead. Go ahead, Chris.
I'm, I'm going to, I'm going to turn off my video, if that's okay, because it seems like my internet signal is struggling to keep up at the moment. Would you like me to, to share a screen and give an overview of the project?
Yes, please.
Great. All right, can you all see my screen?
That looks like you. Yeah, there we are.
Okay. So, we put together some renderings of the project to, to share with you. So, this is, this is a bird's eye view of the renovated building. And you could see, the, you know, the parking lot in the front is, is to remain. We've added handicap parking near the front and some landscaping and lighting in the existing planting beds. The, there's one planting bed, which we're modifying, which is probably better viewed in the, in the plan drawings, but you can see a piece of it here down in the bottom of the screen. But the rest of the improvements to the parking lot, besides repairing the asphalt and, and water and sewer lines are, are the landscaping and lighting that you see here in this, in this rendering. We're proposing the front entrance to the building would be these doors here. This is a handicap, handicap ramp up to the entrance. The, there's existing overhead doors along the front here that we're, we previously stated that we were either going to repair or replace. It's looking like we're leaning towards replacing them with, with new metal and glass doors along that side. There's, there's seating along the front, landscaping and planters along the front. And then I'll take you through. This is a rendering of the rear of the building. This, this piece here is the, is going to be used as the kitchen and the office. There's outside dining with like a covered, a semi-covered trellis area in between these two wings of the building. And then the wing on the, on the right side is part of the, um, part of the, you know, the dining and bar area. This is a rendering, again, a close up on, so you can see the front doors and the new proposed windows, the lighting across the front of the, of the building, the bicycle rack to the side and the fencing, which goes around the property, around the rear of the property. Again, this is the view from the, from the street. And we're back to the, to the overall. Are there, can I ask if there are any questions at, at this stage before I go into the drawings?
Board, any questions?
So, there seems to be now eight parking spaces, one of them being the handicap?
Um.
Still seven?
No, it's still seven. It hasn't, it hasn't changed. It's, this is, uh, this will give you more detail on, on the parking right here. So, we have, it's the loading zone. Maybe that's what looked like the eighth base. So, this, this space here that's hatched is the, the loading zone for the, for the accessible parking spot. And then, so this is four parking spots on this side and three on the other side. So, this overall site plan, you can see that, you know, the parking area in the front, this is the, the planter area that will be reconstructed near the street. This is where the signage will be located near the street. Existing planter area that will be re-landscaped along the side. This is the, there's two entrances to the, to the, you know, to the, into the property currently, which will, will remain. We've got the main, the main entrance here for, you know, the, the guest parking. And then we've got the second curb cut here for the side driveway, which will be used for the loading zone for, for the brewery. We've got the main building, which will be the bar, restaurant, and banquet spaces. We've got the brewery building in the back. This is the outdoor patio space. Any questions about the site plan?
A quick question. Do you expect occupancy outside in that space you just mentioned, your outside courtyard space?
Yes.
Is it used, used for your clients, customers?
Yes.
Are you referring to that, that, that space where the little hand is now, Clark? Are you talking about the, the?
The outdoor patio space of the new trees are, new sewer line, et cetera, between the brewery, that triangular-ish space?
Triangular space here? Yeah, this, this is sort of overview spit, overflow space in the back. So, there'd be trees back here. I mean, this would be accessible to, to patrons of, of the, of the bar tasting room. What you see here is these three little rectangles are planters sort of dividing the, the patron space from the, you know, from the, the back of house space, where the, you know, the brewery, the brewery would be functioning. You know, this is the loading zone right in here. So, this is an overhead door, which you could see in the rendering, which is located right, right back on this side. That's where the trucks would back up to. And then on this side, there would be windows so that people in the, in the garden could, could view in and sort of see the activities of, of the brewery.
And will there be tables and chairs in this triangular area where there's trees, where you have the trees?
What we currently propose is tables and chairs in, in this space under here. But I think that, you know, this would be sort of an area for, for expansion, but the primary space is, is, you know, within the building. So, maybe this backyard could be used, you know, for another gathering or, you know, a, a small party or, or COVID dining, if that's what we're still working with when this happens.
Christina?
Yes.
It's Victoria Paladaro speaking. Are you changing the stormwater drainage patterns at all? I saw that it's currently paved right now. You're adding stone.
Um, we, well, we are not adding any other permeable materials. We're proposing, so let me go back to the existing. This is all paved with asphalt in this area right now. We're proposing to remove that and replace it with some kind of crushed stone. So, again, that's a, you know, that's, that's two impermeable materials as far as stormwater design goes, but we're not, we are not, you know, we are not modifying, you know, the roof lines or, you know, adding additional, you know, anything that would, that would increase the stormwater demand.
And what about the front of the property where the parking is?
Yeah, that's all, right now, that's all existing asphalt. So, I'll pan over to the, this is the existing.
Are you just adding striping? You're not redoing the driveway?
We're adding striping, so, correct. And we're redoing, so you can see that the shape of this front garden now does not allow for this fourth parking space. So, we're looking to replace that and reshape it so that we can get four parking spots on this side, including the accessible parking and, and three on the other side, and kind of maximize that. So, that's the only, that's the only reason for, you know, for modifying that, that space. But we're not, we're not adding any additional asphalt or paving.
So, forgive me for this question, but I'm, I'm new to Hudson. I know this is a state road. Does the DOT have to review this change in the curb cut?
Well, it's not, it's not actually a change of the curb cut. So, I mean, I'll let the board answer to that. But we're, we're only changing this, you know, this one planted area.
But isn't that part of the curb cut?
Can you see the original again?
Sure.
It looks like you're widening it, maybe?
This, this space in here is getting, is getting a little bit wider, yes.
Okay. Is it the board's practice to generally refer applications on, on this road to DOT?
Larry, Larry, could you chime in here? Because I don't know, this seems like such a minor change.
Let me ask a question first. When, um, I mean, Victoria, when you say curb cut, are you talking about the cut from the sidewalk to the street or just the entrance to the business?
I'm, I'm talking about the entryway to the business from the road. So, it looks like there's a sidewalk there, which is going to have to be modified, because if you're?
Is this the curb cut right here that you're talking about?
Here, let me see if I can, um?
This says sidewalk. So, when you say curb cut, are you talking about this area?
I can't see your thing, but this is what I was thinking of as the curb cut. Can you see the red?
Yes.
So, right now, the curb goes to about here, right? It goes like this and like that. So, they're modifying that entrance?
Uh huh, bringing the curb cut over there?
In communities that I work in, this would require approval by the DOT. And it looks like it's also going to require some approval to the sidewalk, because once you bring this, once you move this, doesn't the sidewalk have to come up or, or go down, be depressed so that a car can go over it?
I think the sidewalk is already down.
Oh.
It is.
Yeah.
That's a regular driveway.
Building.
Ready.
Yeah, and this is right. This is, this, the sidewalk is already down.
Isn't the sidewalk down from here to here?
Yeah, this, and it comes down to the street and you come up, because this is a garage. It was a garage.
Right there, they're going to have to change the sidewalk, right?
They may not. Not the sidewalk. I mean, that's up to them.
Well, that's my question. I'm not an engineer, so I just want to make sure that someone's looking at that to make sure that all the improvements that go along with changing the shape of the curb, you know, and, and the sidewalk are, and are part of the project.
Right. I would, I would say we'll review that. You know? Christina, we're getting terrible feedback. Do you have your phone and your computer together? I do not, no. I just have. Now you sound better, okay. Go ahead. Um, I, I think we'll review that, but by, my assumption at the moment is that we won't have to modify, you know, the sidewalk. But perhaps that could be, you know, a condition of, of the approval if, if the board wanted to go that.
Yeah, we just, whatever you do, don't lose one of your parking spaces.
Well, that's the thing. Exactly. I'd be, you know, that's, that's what's driving the, you know, the, the shape of, of, of this, you know? Leaving, leaving this as it, as it currently is would reduce one of the parking spaces. So, we certainly don't want, don't want to do that.
I have a question that doesn't relate to parking or anything else in that line. But since it was, since the facility was a service station and a gas station for quite a number of years, have you tested the ground to make sure that there's no remediation necessary?
Yes. Yes, the owners did some extensive research on the site. Or I should say that, you know, the prospective owners.
Right.
So, they did the appropriate tests, in other words?
Yes.
Phase one or phase whatever, okay.
So, the board, any other questions before I open it up to the public?
This might be for Victoria, actually, but if, in the event that the business does want to use the kind of backyard area for seating, would they have to come back before the planning board to get a new site plan approval, sort of similar to what Backbar did when they put up their, their tents?
So, I'd want to talk to Craig about it, but I think that if they want to use it for seating, it should be shown on the site plan now, indicated either with tables or a note that says, you know, potential outdoor seating area.
Hi, everybody. This, this is Emma, one of the potential buyers. I, I do want to state that our, in, we, we hope to use the outdoor garden area for some seating. We just didn't have a chance to put down any kind of arundack chairs or tables out there, but definitely this is beautiful space that would be used for people to sit and enjoy their drink.
Well, that, that then is going to change the occupancy, because right now, right? Because right now, I think your occupancy is a hundred something. This is for the indoor space, I guess, as well as the, the court, I'll call it a courtyard. Your occupancy is what, a hundred and something?
It says 114.
Okay. And so, and now if you're sitting in the garden in the back, that, that increases the occupancy, doesn't it?
Yeah, again, I think, I think it should be shown on the plans.
Laura, it's Emma again. I do want the number of the occupancy in does include the outdoor seating.
Oh, the 114?
So, we're looking at this space. Emma, chime in if you, if you disagree. But we're really looking at this space, I believe, as an overflow space. So, this is going to be accessible to the public and have thing in, in, in the garden. But we're, we're, we're counting the, the occupancy as based off of the building and the occupancy that, that dictates.
I have a question. I'm, I'm not a beer drinker, and I, I really never been interested in it. But, um, what I see on television is that they boil it. Is there any smells that's associated with making beer in the City of Hudson that may come out and everybody smelling it?
Teresa, that's a very good question. It's Emma again. Our brewery is going to be considered a, a small brewery. And at this scale, there will not be any smells. You are right that beer does get boiled in a kettle, but it's a very quick process. And you would only, you're probably familiar with large breweries like Coors.
Television, right.
Where you smell the beer.
Okay. Because I was wondering how would you contain that and make sure, you know?
Can we, can we have a look at the rendering? Again, the sort of bird's eye?
Sure.
Yeah. Did you, I mean, this is, this is much out of curiosity as anything else. But did you explore putting the parking in the rear and having the courtyard be out, out front? Because, you know, right now, it feels like a very suburban layout. And I know there already is parking there now. But, you know, one of the great things, we're going to hear it later, Backbar is, you know, discussing continuing their operation of having the tables out front. And it creates a really nice feeling for the sidewalk. And, you know, one of the things about the restoration of the building, which I think you guys are doing a really nice job of, of bringing the building back to a new use. And, you know, I think the facade as it, as it is, is great. But it seems like, you know, it's, it's not suburbia here. And you're really close to the center of town. And it's, it's in a part of town that I've walked through quite, quite a bit. And again, this is more out of curiosity than anything. You know, as a, as a planning board member, I don't really have a role in, in commenting on your design. But I, I do wonder whether it might be a much more pleasant project and maybe even a more profitable one if, if it had a front garden that was, you know, common, public, and people were up, up. The best commercial across the street does that, right? There are little tables up front. And it's great when you go by and you see folks out there.
Nice idea.
But then we're going to lose parking.
Right. Well, I think if you, if you, if we look at the site plan, you'll see that it's, this is very tight in here so that it's, you know, it doesn't, the position of these two buildings doesn't really lend itself to, to this being, you know, used as, as parking. Because what, you know, what it seems like, if you're familiar with these buildings, I think, is, you know, the, the hotel is next. And the, right now especially, these two parking lots are kind of blended. So, you know, it almost feels like this entrance here, which is to the hotel parking lot, is to, to this building. And it sort of blends right into the back of, of, of this property. So, but when you, you know, when you look at, you know, the, the boundaries, which is this dashed line, you know, right here, this is the, the property line, and the position of these two buildings, it really wouldn't work to have parking back here. So, instead, what we're proposing, you know, is to unify the street how we can and to have, you know, tables and chairs along the front out here to, you know, to bring that, you know, that, that street life, you know, to the streets as much as, as possible. And you'll have the, you know, the glass doors will be open and, you know, you'll be able to see in to all the activity inside the building.
So, Christina, I think one thing that might be important to this board, you mentioned the glass doors being open, and that was going to be my question. I'm assuming you're talking about the roll-up doors?
Yes.
So, we typically ask applicants to, as part of, as a condition, to close those doors after 10 o'clock PM for noise for the neighbors.
Right. That would be, that wouldn't be an issue, you know? In fact, you know, as we've, we've had preliminary talks about, you know, the hours of, of operation for, for this, which, you know, and I think that, you know, this is going to be a business that is, is going to, you know, shut down relatively early in the night. This is not going to be, you know, open till midnight. So, you know?
Well, we would, we would want to know the hours of operation before, before we could approve, approve an application. So, whenever you do know that, that would be great.
Emma, do you want to chime in with, with the hours as you've made a decision?
The hours, the hours aren't set in stone, but the intention is most much to be done by 10 o'clock. And I, you know, I can't imagine it's ever been open past midnight. Really, these sort of operations aren't late night bars. These are daytime evening type sessions. So, I can.
Those opening, that's.
Yeah.
So, we would be opening, let's say, around noon and closing around 10 o'clock, let's say, on a Friday and a Saturday. And maybe on a Sunday, we would open at noon and close maybe at 8:00 PM, something like that.
Okay, well, well, that sounds great. But, but, but. But you're going to, when you can let us know definitively, in other words, if you could give us your hours rather than, than maybe something like that. I mean, if, if, if you want to state your hours from, you know, what you just said, that would be great. But, but I think we want to know what the hours are.
Well, are you, is the board concerned with the hours of operation in general or just the hours that these doors are open?
Well, I think both. But, but it's hard for us to, to say anything until we know what the hours of operation are. And, and then, of course, these hours include, you know, the back garden and, and everything else. So, yeah, if you could let us know what, you know, what the hours will be.
And I'd also like to know what your plan is for, if someone wanted to rent your garden space, for instance, what will your policy be on amplified music?
Well, I think that, that, you know, that would, you know, the, obviously, the establishment will, will follow any, any noise ordinance that, that exists in, in the town code of, of the City of Hudson. But with, you know, with this sort of establishment, I think that it would make sense to have the option to have amplified music at times.
Well, will, will any rentals also adhere to the hours of operation that you're going to give us? So, example, if, for example, if your hours of operation end at 10:00 PM, does that mean that somebody that rents your space will also end at 10:00 PM?
I think we can, we can put that together for you and give you the, those, you know, those hours and what, what the intentions are of the owner to, and, you know, and have events there and what those hours would be. So.
Because I don't think any of us will have too much trouble with amplified music ending at 10. But if you're, if you're going, I mean, I can only speak for myself, but, but if it's going to be a rental situation where amplified music is going longer than, than what your normal hours of operation are, we would need to know that.
Right. I think that it's nobody's intention that there would be amplified music past 10 o'clock. I think we can establish that. And I think as.
Would it, would it, we'll have to give you hours for, you know, sort of maximum hours for outdoor and maximum hours for indoor? Because we're a little bit, it's a little hard to know what the hours are going to be with certainty at this point. But we can certainly say that we, you know, we'll close down the outdoor space with amplified music after 10:00 PM. And that's an easy thing to say. And then we'll, you know, we'll close the doors at 10:00 PM. And our expectation is we're not going to be open much later than that. But I'm a little hesitant to say we'll never, ever, ever be open past 10:00 PM under any circumstance.
So, it, it sounds like the board wants you to think about your operations. You don't have to answer off the cuff right now and maybe provide some kind of narrative statement, explaining how you're going to be handling the special events, amplified music, the doors, and your hours of operation.
Just give it some thought and get back.
I want to get back to the site plan, too. I know we sort of dropped that, but, you know, looking back at, especially on the Backbar plan, I mean, all the outdoor spaces were presented. I mean, all the outdoor spaces were presented and I'm assuming you guys have thought that through. But I, I do think that the site plan should, should show your configuration of, of seating and tables in the outdoor space.
Yes, please do that.
Sure.
The reason we ask for that is in the end, at the end of the day, it's the code enforcement officer that's going to come. And he needs to know exactly what we've approved. And if you, if we have a site plan as it looks at this very moment, and all of a sudden you have tables and chairs back there, he's not going to allow you to have those. So it really is a, it's to your benefit to include them.
Thank you.
Can I also ask too, that if, in terms of other things to include in the application, if, if this study has been done that showed no remediation was necessary, could you include that study with the application as well?
Yes.
So, so Stephen, it's Emma O'Donnell again. We, so we have, before even putting an offer in on the property, we have, we engaged to conic engineering to do an environmental study of the property. Because as you know, area, any kind of gas, former gas stations and auto shops can be wrought with issues. And what, what we understand is that in 1978, the existing owners removed, according to code, the buried tanks that were on the property. And they were done, you know, to the letter of the law. And since then, there has been nothing else. So, and then was, you know, further, further reviews were, environmental reviews were done. But that, this is what we understand of the property and we understand that it's clean.
Did, did, did they do a phase one environmental impact study?
I'm not exactly sure what that is, but I, I don't.
The answer to that question is that's, that's in process. It has not been completed yet. But we're, we're certainly part of the process of purchasing the property.
So they are, they are in the process of phase one. Okay.
Just so, just for update, there's phase one and phase two. Phase one is really a paper study to look at what might be there. And phase two would be a more detailed sort of physical study, testing soils, et cetera. And no doubt your phase one is going to identify previous uses, including a gas station and auto body shop or whatever they're doing, their auto repair shop. So it does seem, in my view, legit to make sure that phase two is done, so you know what's there and what's not there. Besides underground storage tanks, you know, there's issues of course of spillage of oil, et cetera. So just out of abundance of caution, phase two study seems appropriate.
Yeah. I mean, you know, one thing to look for is whether they had hydraulic lifts in the service base. Because the, the tanks for those things are often the most difficult to remediate. And they're indoors.
Christina, I have another question when you're ready. Can you explain this 15 foot wide right of way? I didn't see the note five. And can you also confirm that trucks can get in and out of the brewery? And that there's adequate room for the dumpster to get emptied?
Yes. The 15 foot right of way was, you know, part of, noted on the, on the survey of the, of the property. So that's where that note came from. But yes, this, this basically, this driveway here would be, would be sufficient room for the trucks to, you know, basically back in. And, you know, and get, get the dumpsters from this location.
So is the 15 foot right of way in favor of the neighbor?
Or I, I don't, I don't have that information. I'm not sure where the, what the right of way serves.
And this is Paul. That driveway belongs to this property. The right of way is for the neighbor, which is an art gallery to use that for access to their property.
Okay. So that's a right in favor of the neighbor.
Could you say that again, Paul? I didn't understand what you said.
That driveway, where it says 15 foot wide right of way is property that belongs to this, part of this lot.
And that's.
Which is approximately where the, where the head was, where it says paved gravel up here.
Right here.
There's a, there's an art gallery there and the, and the right of way is for that property to get access to their property.
And are you changing that access at all? Are you doing anything to impede it?
No.
You know, we're just fixing up the gate, which is a little old. But no, we will not be impeding their right of way.
Right. But if the truck is backed up, it would help to see where the truck is going to sit. Because it could wind up actually impeding their access, right?
I mean. Going to back up all the way back to this brewery building back here. So that the trucks, apart from the, from the dumpsters, the trucks that will be primarily coming into this property are going to back all the way up. This is the gate right here where there's this line with the X's in it. So you can see the, you know, the right of way stops here to access this, this property. This hatched area with the, with the, the sand hatch is what's denoted as the right of way.
What size trucks do you expect?
I would, I would say the small box trucks would, would primarily.
Can you provide the, so normally the engineer would ask us, but I'm going to ask it. Can you provide the template showing that the, whatever size truck you're expecting can actually maneuver that backing in? And, and going and, and that, how it fits behind the fence?
Yes.
And what happens if the gate is closed and the driver backs up and then has to get out of the car and go in and find out someone to open the gate? And the gallery needs to get access? Or sheesh, is the right of way also how a fire truck services the gallery?
Lawrence, this is Emma. This would be a momentary event, not, it would be no longer than a minute. We would, we would know when we expect deliveries and there, there will not be a ton of trucks coming in and out. I just want to clarify that.
And, and Emma, this, this is the only way that, to access the dumpsters. It has to be on this, this, this road here, this?
Yes, that's correct.
That's the only way to access it. Okay.
So everybody, this is already the existing pathway.
Right, right. I know.
For the existing building to deliver tires and equipment and all of that. So this driveway has been in use and currently is in use in this exact use.
And if. Want me to share a photo, Christina?
Sure. But I was just going to mention before you do, if you look at this existing site plan, you'll see that there's some sort of remnants of a concrete foundation here in the back. So this is currently being used, as Emma stated, for delivery of all kinds of auto parts and tires and, and all sorts of things. There's a large commercial overhead door on this side of the building. So as you can see, currently, this, this driveway is being used by those trucks. And there's a pinch point here from the corner of the building to this concrete foundation that looks like it's even narrower than 15 feet. And they're maneuvering back, you know, to the door, which is, which is on, in this area. So here, now when you look at this, this is much wider and we're, we're really improving that, that condition.
So board, we're, obviously because we have some unresolved issues, I would like to continue this public hearing next month. We have an incredibly tight agenda today. And so I would very much like to continue this in October with, with your permission. And because we're going to need information on whether or not we need any DOT modifications to the sidewalk, if they need to weigh in on that. Any conditions about hours of operation, amplified music and special events, table and chair placement on the site plan. And is it turning radius? Is that what you wanted, suggested Victoria's turning?
The truck turning, the truck turning template, showing how the truck would.
But, but Victoria, if it, if it already has been happening, which it has for years and years, do they really, I mean, can't they do what the previous owner did?
We don't know. I mean, I, I don't know what's happening now. And I assume Christina, this is just like a CAD file that she just puts the layer on, but I don't know.
Absolutely, Victoria, but, but you understand the trucks are going to be backing in. They're going to be backing up to the dumpsters, they're going to be backing up to the doors. So I can show the, the, the template on here, but really the turning part is going to be out here from the street backing.
Okay.
May I ask for a site? Is there a problem with that, going out, taking a look at it ourselves?
Yeah, that would be nice. Could, yeah.
Some of the stuff that comes up, you know, I mean, we should be visiting the sites and seeing for ourselves what's going on, especially like Victoria, you don't live here. And, you know, you know, like, I know that this building existed for years, but all of this, I didn't know.
Do you want the applicant to attend or you want to visit individually?
Well, I think like visit calls for the applicant to attend.
So if you want to.
Explain to you what they, what they want. And you can see it, you know?
You can set that up. I just have to tell you that you can't talk amongst each other. It would just. Meeting when you just.
I understand. To me, visual is very, is something that helps a lot.
I agree. So Christina, et cetera, how would you, for those board members who are interested in coming by and looking at the property, how would you like to handle that?
I, I think we'll have to make an appointment with, you know, with the, the current owner of the building. So, and were you saying that the planning board would like to potentially come in two different groups? So you don't have a, a quorum on site.
We can come, we can come together. We can come together as long as we don't discuss anything, guys. Let's, let's.
Make it. Christina, could you suggest a couple of times that would work?
Absolutely.
You and the current, or for the current owners and then any board members who are interested could maybe fit into one of those, say, two times.
And then to your, to your list, Betsy, of things, and again, I don't know what purview we have over this. But the other thing was mentioned was that the phase one and phase two with environmental impact study or whatever that's called, Clark.
Got it.
In terms of the, the department, the, the, the sidewalk and all of that, who do they, how does that happen? Do they have to, who do they contact or who?
I think that's a question for. Tonight, after the public speaks, I also want, I know you have a lot to get through. I also wanted to introduce a resolution for the board to classify this and to send it to county planning. So we can get that moving.
Okay. How, how do you suggest we classify this and get that moving?
Yeah. So I have. Sure. Okay. Um, the applicants provided you with an EAF. There was one mistake in the EAF and the project is within the vicinity of a historic site. So that just should be corrected and noted. But when I looked at the SEAKER regulations, there is a section here, 617.4(c)(18), reuse of a residential or commercial structure where the use is permitted, even if it's by special permit. And it doesn't exceed any thresholds for a type one action. I looked at the type one list and I didn't see that it would exceed any thresholds. It's a small half acre lot. So if, if everyone agrees, we can classify it as a type two action tonight. And also send it to Columbia County Planning Board because it's located within 500 feet of a state highway.
I looked at the, the code too, and I didn't see anything that would indicate that this would be an unlisted.
Well, I'm trusting you, Victoria, and you, Betsy, and this looks fine to me.
Well, this is Paul. One note, and hopefully this has been raised. The bank has asked us to use a different LLC to buy this. So the, the name of the applicant is in the process of changing. I think that paperwork was filed recently, right Christina?
Yes.
It's now seven foot, 735 Columbia Street LLC.
So we need to change that in our resolution, Victoria.
We can do that. I don't think I, I'm not sure I have the updated application, but that, that's been submitted to the board?
It's been submitted, so I'll, I'll follow up and make sure that we can get a copy of that, Victoria.
Okay. 735 Columbia Street LLC. Okay. It says you've applied for a conditional use permit, site plan approval. Craig has indicated that it's a manufacturing use. It's on a site plan, et cetera. And then it just recites the facts and then it says classifies it as a type two action and directs the secretary to refer it to the Columbia County Planning Board.
So do I have a motion to?
I have a question. I just want to go back to that. Since we're talking about this now, where does the environmental impact come into this? That has nothing to do with this? I mean.
If we, if we list this as a type two, we don't do SEAKER.
But, but this was a, you know, this was a gas station and, you know, it could have had, we don't know, a hydraulic lift. I mean, is that within our purview? I mean, they're checking this out. I don't.
We can hold off. So, I mean, you're talking about actual contamination at the site itself, which if they found it would be remediated, they would have to remove and contain any contamination. Seaker is a little bit different. It talks about environmental impacts in a community sense. So, you know, unless there was so much contamination that even digging the dirt was going to result in impacts to the neighbors and the neighborhood, I, I don't think that's an issue. I mean, the board can have a copy of the, of the phase one because it may be that if there's a pocket of contamination, we want to avoid it. But for SEAKER purposes, we are bound by the regulations. And if the regulations say that it's type two and no further SEAKER review is needed, then, then that.
If that's not within this, this document, then, then let's go ahead then.
Okay. So do I have a motion to introduce this resolution, please?
I'll make the motion.
Thank you, Laura. Do I have a second?
Second, second.
Thank you, Steve. And Linda, would you do a roll call vote, please?
That's, I mean.
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Larry?
Grab stain.
Sure.
Far.
May I ask, are you recusing yourself?
No, I just haven't read it. I, it's.
Yes.
Okay. I mean, we can take a few minutes if you want to read it.
That's a good idea. I mean, I, I did read it pretty fast, but just in case there's something.
It's up there. There you go.
And for members of the public who are interested perhaps in commenting on this application, I'm sorry, we're running so tight on time tonight, but we will invite you to make any comments at our October meeting. Please also know that you can always email me at mycityemail. And we put all comments, emails and letters, we post them all on the city website so that they're available for everyone to see. And so any questions, any thoughts, any concerns, I invite you please to get in touch with me, preferably in writing, meaning email or a letter. So we have a record and we will take any phoned in questions in October.
Did they, did this in full environmental assessment form?
You're right. They, they did. It was a short one.
I have a quick question. And again, maybe a little confusion on what you discussed, Victoria, relative to SEAKER and then the more, I guess maybe the more detailed environmental review, which is the, the potential contamination. Um, here's my question. As part of the condition, since it's a conditional use permit, can we make a statement there basically saying, you know, we require the applicant to abide by. we, uh, require the applicant to abide by state law relative to, you know, relative to Phase One, Phase Two assessment and environmental remediation?
So. Okay, so the Phase One, Phase Two is something that an applicant does or a landowner before they purchase a property in order to take advantage of the innocent owner provision. So under federal law, right, so you're liable for any contamination on the property, period.
Right.
But sometimes if you do these Phase Ones, you can say, well, you know, I, I took all appropriate inquiries. We didn't know it was up there and you can get out of that liability. So that's what that, that's the purpose of the, the applicant's report is really to assist in that. This is state environmental quality review. And the first step in SEACER is to determine whether something is type one, type two, or unlisted. So you look at the SEACER. And you determine whether it meets any of those thresholds. Here, when you look at the thresholds, it, it appears to be a type two action because it's reuse of an existing commercial structure. That in and of itself ends the SEACER inquiry. So, I mean, the statement about having to comply with state law, to me, I mean, they have to comply anyways. I wouldn't. The fact that there's a Phase One doesn't trigger any action necessarily on the applicant's part.
So has everybody now read the resolution? Are you comfortable with it?
Good.
I have a question. Is that the right address? State Route 23B? Says whereas it's located in State Route.
So the address is.
The project is located on New York State Route 23B.
So that's my understanding that that portion of Columbia Street is also New York State Route 23B? But if I'm wrong, please correct me. I, I had to.
It could be, I didn't know. I thought it was Columbia Street.
Well, it is. The address is 735, 737 Columbia Street. But, um, when I looked up New York State Route 23B, it seems to share the route. So it, it may be that we want to put this off until we can get some more information, but.
Yeah, why don't we wait till the next, next meeting because we're not in a rush for this, right?
Well, I have to ask that this is, this is a first step before you're able to refer it to county planning, correct?
Yes.
So if, if, if you did not do that tonight, then, then it would be another month.
Right, right.
So I, I would, um, you know.
Can anybody look at a map and do, if, I mean.
I mean, has any, does anyone else know that besides Victoria? That, that this part of Columbia Street is State Route 23B? Betsy, anybody? No, no.
Is that important to have in the resolution, Victoria?
Well, yes.
It's the reason you would send it to county planning. So this is, this is.
It doesn't matter. It doesn't make any difference, does it, if it's wrong?
Right, if it's wrong, county planning will just say we have no jurisdiction. But I, I agree with Christina, it's better to send it because at least authorize sending it so that they don't have to wait another month.
And this is, you know. All right, let's move on, guys.
And yes, it looks like it is on State Route 23B. So let's go ahead. All right, so I have a first and a second. Can we go back to our vote, please?
Betsy.
Yes.
Yes.
Larry.
Yes.
Clark.
Yes.
Laura.
Yes.
Yes.
And John.
Yes.
Okay, thank you all. So we will see you again in October. Thank you very, very much. And I, I just want to ask before we move on, is there, are there any other issues or any other questions or documentation that you think the, the board would want to review at that, at that October meeting?
Yeah, yes.
It's important for the board to understand, in addition to the things we talked about, and I have notes of everything that, that was raised, but it's this, you know, this project is, um, you know, the, the sale of this property is, is contingent on, is this approval.
That's why we have to do it.
From the planning board and.
We understand.
A hundred percent, but I want to make sure that we do everything we can to, to give you all, all of the documentation and all of the, the information you can so that, so that you make an informed decision. So I wanted to ask. In the interest of time, board, would you please write me within the next 10 days? And let me know if there's any additional documentation you would like to see from Christina and the applicants. I will get that to them and that will give them time to turn it around and get it back to us for October. Okay?
What would be great is that if we could, if we were going to do a tour, that we did it before those 10 days were up.
I would suggest that you do that. Yes, that's, that's a good idea. Okay, great. And we'll get you some dates for that. Okay, thank you very much. All right, do I have a motion to close the public, uh, to, no, we're not closing the public hearing. We're keeping the public hearing up until next one, so on we go.
You want a motion for that?
No, 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 I don't. Do I need a motion for that, Victoria?
It would, it would be helpful just to say the date, motion to adjourn the public hearing until October, whatever the date is, so the public knows.
Okay. I, I put a motion.
The date is going to be, so let me look.
Let me look at the date, please.
All right, uh, we will see you again on Tuesday, October 13th. All right, um, moving on to new business. 119 Columbia Street, Scott, a special use permit application from Bell Atlantic Mobile Systems LLC, DBA Verizon Wireless to install and operate wireless communication equipment on the roof of 119 Columbia Street, Providence Hall. This is. Scott, um, I will put you on, I will ask you to be brief. This is obviously going to go to a public hearing. I will tell the board that we did receive escrow on this. So Victoria is advising us, which is wonderful. So Scott, I, I turn it over to you for a quick, uh, review of the proposal.
Sure, thank you, uh, and good evening. I will be brief. If I'm too brief, you have questions, let me know. We've been before the board before preliminarily during the pre-application stages. We've advised the board what we're looking to do. Basically install six antennas on the building that's at 119 Columbia Street. On top of the building, on the roof, there's also going to be some equipment that we would be installing. No ground equipment is proposed. We've submitted the application. The biggest holdup that we had was completing the visual analysis that we were working with Stephen on and that was done not too long ago. So we've included, uh, what we think is a very detailed visual analysis that shows you what the views will be like from different areas, including Bliss Towers. Um, I don't know if you've had a chance to review that, but that's in the record. There'll be no interference with these application, with this, with these antennas on any of the, you know, standard TV, radio, et cetera. We will be fully compliant with FCC requirements. And for that reason, there are no health effects. And I agree that this is probably going to go, well, we'll go to a public hearing. We were hoping that the board could get that scheduled so that we could move along as, as quick as possible since we do have the FCC shot clock that's out, that's out there.
What is the FCC shot clock?
So when we're install, when we're installing a facility on this one, this is a co-location, so it would be basically 90 days from which the application was submitted. That it has to be decided, an answer has to be decided upon.
So does that mean 90 days from tonight or from the day that you sent the application?
So that's a complicated, honestly complicated. Don't hold me to it. It would be from the date of the application. Technically, it could be earlier than that, but I think that's a stretch of an argument. So I think it would be fair to say we're happy to go with the date of submission or the date of receipt of the application, which off the top of my head, I don't recall what that was.
Okay.
The board to feel entirely pressured by this, the applicant can extend the review time. And if the board exceeds the review time, they have to really take you to court to enforce it. So there, there are all sorts of, you know, you can send them a notice that the application was incomplete and then it, it starts the shot clock over and gives them a shorter time. So I, I think it's in everyone's interest to review this together in an efficient manner and not have to get down in the, the details of the shot clock.
Yeah, and in no way was I suggesting that the board not review this in an efficient manner. I just want to get the process started because we know we're going to have a public hearing. So I'm just requesting, could you schedule it for next month? I don't even know that the public hearing is going to be closed next month, but I just want to get it started, that's all.
I don't see any reason why we can't open a public hearing next month in, in all likelihood. Scott, I do have one, I did, I may not have read the file completely, I'm sorry. But what other buildings did you all consider?
So you, you may remember that we considered the Bliss Tower building and we actually made application to the ta, uh, city last summer when we found out that, that there were some issues with that, whether it was going to be demolished or whatever. And then the owners basically said they don't want us on the property. And so we said, that's fine. We started again and went over to this, this property.
And what other properties did you consider? I'm just, I'm really wondering why you selected this property and not an office building or just, you know, to allay people's concerns. So they live in Providence Hall. Why not on the County Health and Human Services Building or?
You know, I don't know where that building is. I can certainly have our RF engineer. What's that?
It's a block away.
Okay. I would have our RF engineer explain that, but, uh, so I don't know why. I don't know if it's a height issue. I don't know, uh, if that was considered or not off the top of my head. But I, we would definitely answer that question for you as part of the hearing.
Yeah, we would definitely, that's going to be a very important thing for us to know because you should know going in that there are people that live in that neighborhood who are very concerned about this. And I know that we're not permitted to consider health effects here, but the stress and the strain on that community is quite terrific. And they will be very concerned about why that building was selected. So I think you should be prepared to tell them why that's the building and not any one of another six or a dozen buildings in and around the area that could have just as easily accommodated this equipment.
Sure.
I also want to say that, um, at our last meeting with you, Scott, uh, I brought up the health issues and, uh, and I, and I, and I'm hoping that the public is hearing this. So the board has not neglected that as an issue because I brought it up. But Scott, your response to that was that, uh, that there's a federal law? I mean, could you talk about that, that, that?
Sure. The 1996 Telecommunications Act, so that's been 24, 25 years in the making. It says that local municipalities cannot consider, um, effects associated with radio frequency emissions. And that has been translated into if we demonstrate that we are in full compliance with the FCC requirements, a local municipality cannot deny an application based upon perceived health effects. And, and I'll say, I'll say it because there are no health effects, but sometimes the public will perceive that there are health effects. So the FCC, recognizing that there aren't any health effects, if we're in compliance with their standard, has said local municipalities cannot consider this.
Though it seems as though that has happened, like in California, though, again, I haven't researched this, but there's never been an occasion where health effects have been, um, have stopped at the, uh, you know, this happened, this happened from happen.
I, I would say that there are probably many municipalities across the country that have denied applications for health effects. And I think that every one that did that, if there was a challenge to that, was overturned because the federal law is very clear on that.
Okay, well, from, um, we will obviously get into this in lots of detail when we open the public hearing. But I would really urge you to make sure that, that you all have considered alternate sites and be prepared to explain to us why they would not work for you.
Yeah, of course. I, I just want to, sorry, Betsy, I, I just want to reiterate Betsy's point and, and frankly Laura's. You know, we, um, we have an engaged and informed citizenry in this town and, um, I think it's imperative that if you have evaluative criteria that, uh, you know, lead you to prefer one site over another, that should be spelled out for the, for the public, right? You know, what are you looking for when you cite these things? Why did you pick this site? Was the process of eliminating other potentials and, and in favor of this one? And make that as explicit and as clear as possible so that the public understands, you know, how we got to this point and, and, um, that, um, I, I imagine you're going to have, uh, concerns, if not flat out opposition and, um, that, that needs to be understood and needs to be addressed right, right away.
No, thank you. And we, we will, we will provide that information because our RF engineers have reasons for it. Oftentimes they relate to the height of an existing structure, um, constructability, whether the space exists or whether you have honestly a willing landlord. So we'll, we'll address that.
I, I mean, there's, there's two things. One, I believe, Scott, that this is the second time that you've cut, that you've attempted to rush us and we represent the, the community. So, uh, uh, I think that that's maybe not something that I would advise you to continue to do.
Can I respond to that? I, I'm not asking you to, I'm not asking to rush you in any way, shape or form. And I hear you when you say you represent the community. I understand the, the desire to look out for them, but what the planning board's job to do is to apply the law as it exists.
We know our job, Scott. We know that, but we are the community. So let me rephrase that. We are the community. So, uh, uh, thank you though. Shoot. There was another thing. It'll come to me. Continue.
I'll object for a second, Laura. I appreciate your, your comments too. And I know the last time you were in front of us, uh, it became clear and I guess just everybody's reminded that co-location is required essentially. So once there's one site located at us, at a certain building.
That was my other one. Thank you, Clark.
Yeah, okay, great, thanks. So, so I'll, you know, you can finish, Laura. I'll just defer to what.
No, you, you do it. You do it.
Okay.
And then I'm next.
Okay, uh, I'll be brief. As, as a, um.
I'll be brief.
As a reminder, last meeting, uh, there was clear, clear question of the co-location and, um, you know, concerns about that. If there's one there, there could be several. And there's a real, I would say, significant visual impact on that residential building that's, you know, uh, affordable housing for individuals that may be concerned about how their homes appear to the world. And again, I think there, you know, to Betsy's point, there may be other locations that could serve you just as well without burdening this, uh, community with potentially a significant number of, you know, major telecommunications equipment on their, on their rooftop.
I think that it, that, that, that it's important to kind of just lay this out to the community that, you know, I'm just going to say this in layman's terms. If, 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 if there is one, you know, uh, if Verizon has a, uh, what's this thing called? A, 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 a tower there, then by law, the, the planning board cannot say no to AT&amp;T or any other communications, uh, uh, business. So, uh, so I think that everybody should know that. And, and quite well taken, Clark, that, that, you know, that, that the people that live in, in this wonderful building, you know, they're, they're, they're proud of their home and do they really want that their home to become a telecommunications hub? Not sure about that.
I have a question. Now, I was trying to go through your 105-page document and your 97-page document before. And one thing I want to, I really would like for you to explain to me, who is benefiting more on this project? It looks like this developer is acting. Am I right or wrong?
No, I think if you look at the mapping. No, I think if you look at the mapping, there's more coverage provided to the City of Hudson, clearly.
But, but, but basically, Villas of Athens is getting the whole, just the more communications on their side?
No, no, like I said, they're going to get a benefit from that, of course. I'm not denying that. But I think if you look and compare, there's much more coverage provided for on the City of Hudson's side.
Okay, what you, what I read, you said it's going to be Third Street and Columbia, right?
That's, that's, yes, that's a small portion.
The Basilica, something like that, right? Is that what you said in the?
Well, I think it was their RF engineer, so I'd have to go back and look at his report.
But in Hudson goes all the way to Worth Avenue, and then it goes to State. It's just that, to me, in my opinion, what I read, it looks like there's not a lot of benefit to Hudson for this project. But still and all, it's something that I would like explained.
We absolutely will. In fact, I had a presentation-
Who's going to benefit from this particular project?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear the first part.
I would like it to be pointed out as to everyone that's going to benefit. What's the percentage that Athens will benefit as opposed to the percentage that Hudson will benefit? Are you putting these down?
Yeah, we can, we can provide that.
Information. I do want to point out to the board, though, that once the applicant has shown a need for this tower, so, you know, they have to show that there's a gap in service. And then they have to show that they've looked at other alternate locations. But once they demonstrate a need, then, you know, the planning board really has to process the application. One thing the planning board could do to help answer some of these questions that like Ms. Joyner is raising and Ms. Bergolus, you could consider hiring your own consultant because a lot of these reports are very technical.
Yes.
And you could hire a consultant to help explain this to you and to show you that, yes, he agrees with Verizon's analysis, or no, he disagrees with Verizon's analysis. And that might help this further.
That was going to be my recommendation, board, is that in the meantime, between now and when we open the public hearing next month, which I am recommending, that we do, Larry, I think you've got the names, two different engineers who specialize in telecommunications. And that we select one of those, hire them, get them on board, and send them everything that Verizon has sent us to begin their review.
So you know, Victoria-
Oh, really?
Victoria, we had talked about the hiring of an engineer last meeting, or the last time Scott was here. So we were hoping, I think, that we would have that person in place for this meeting, but it-
We just got our escrow in place, Laura. We couldn't hire them until we had escrow in place.
Yeah.
Can I, I forget if you discussed or disclosed who the engineer was. Do you have that information handy?
I, I'd have to look it up. I have two names, and I have to look it up.
Okay.
Okay, board, I'm going to suggest that, do I have a motion to set the start of the public hearing at our October meeting?
So moved.
Thank you, John, do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Larry, Laura, sorry. Linda, do your thing.
Steve.
Yes. That was you, Steve?
Yes.
Larry.
Yes.
Clark.
Yes.
Laura.
Yes.
Teresa?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, Scott, we will see you next month.
Sorry, Chair Grimco, one more question. Has the board classified this under seeker and started that process?
No, how do we do that for this kind of application?
So I assume Scott has provided an EAF.
A long EAF, yes.
Well, yeah, so you would have to go through, maybe we'll do this at the next meeting. Let's be prepared to do this at the next meeting. You have to decide whether it's going to be type one or unlisted.
Okay, thank you. Yes.
Victoria, will you be prepared to give us some advice on that? Some rationale, one way or the other, Victoria?
Yes, I actually haven't had a chance to review this application because the- but I will do that, and I will tell you what I think it is.
Can we, can we get a draft of the resolution prior to the meeting?
You want to review these things?
Yes, we do.
Yes.
I do.
Yeah.
Yes, we do, please. Okay, thank you very much, Scott, we'll see you next month.
Thank you, have a good night.
Thank you.
Okay, next up, 347 Warren Street, site application from Spirits, Fiddles, and Strange Love LLC, DBA Back Bar, to permanently expand its current eating and drinking establishment to the front unused area of its property. So essentially, board, I think what we're going to hear from Mr. Friedman here is that this has been a successful experiment for Back Bar. And they had come to us and asked for temporary site plan approval that would end January 1st. And now they're asking for this to be a permanent situation. So, John, take it away.
Thank you. That is essentially what we're asking for. We started this back in June when the state allowed us to, and you gave us permission to. Since then, we asked the SLA to make that a permanent change in our license. And they're waiting for final photographs. We, we want you to, you know, make it permanent on your side as well. They've given us approval to make it permanent. There have been no complaints of any kind to neighbors, from neighbors, or the police, or Craig. And it's been successful from a business standpoint. Our sales are still down 50% year-over-year, but our sales tax receipts show that we're starting to catch up. And just to, you know, put some of this in perspective, we have no inside dining at all right now. And everything is outside, it's completely touchless. People place, you know, stand in a line socially distanced, there's markers. They place an order. The person taking their orders behind the screen. They dip their card, it's cashless. And they get their drinks, they get a table. Their name gets called, they pick up their food. They sit, they eat, they drink. When they're done, they self-bus and they're off. Our people come out, disinfect the tables, and then they're ready to be used again. And that seems to have been making people pretty happy, comfortable. And doing that, because we're distancing everything slightly farther than what the suggestion is, we're about 10 feet apart, not 6 feet apart between tables. Even though we doubled the size of the restaurant, square footage, we're at the exact same occupancy as we were prior to COVID. When we were, had 100% of the then outdoor area, which was just the area that's under the tent now, and the inside area, which is rather small. So we, you know, thanks to you, we're able to double that size, but we really haven't doubled our occupancy at all. And we'd like to continue to do this, continue under the exact same limitations that you've imposed on us so far. You know, if we do anything like putting up a tent, we go to code. If we want to put up a building, we go to code, get building permits, come to you in either event. And there's no music, there's no external lighting washing out. The only change between when we asked you for temporary permission and today in that property is that Gallery 347, which was the furnishing store or antique store. It is no more, it succumbed to COVID. And its owner has decided to shutter it, and it's just being used for storage right now. So that's the only change from since then. Nothing's changed on our side, except that we've been, you know, operating out in that space and been very successful for us. We'd like to continue that. We've been able to actually offer all of our employees health benefits now.
John, I have a quick question for you. If I'm not mistaken, it appears as though you all are just using the east half of the gravel property in front, not both the east and the west, is that correct?
Yeah, well, while Gallery 347 was there, we had conversation with the State Liquor Authority. And because there were a couple of doors that were on the west side, one door on the west side that would have allowed somebody to go from that space directly into the licensed area, that's not permitted. The SLA had a problem. You know, that's one of the things that spurred 347 Gallery to shutter. The owner of 347 Gallery is our landlord, also a member of Back Bar's company. And so he had an interest in doing that anyway. So it's not like he's losing his business because most of his rent comes from the operation of Back Bar. And now, over the last couple of days, we did put new chairs and tables on the west side. And we're looking forward to continuing to see people out there and serve them out there until either it's too cold or January 2nd. Because I think January 2nd is actually the day we have to stop under the existing temporary authority. And remove everything by then. And, you know, but we did come to you beforehand, so we're hoping, you know, that that'll keep us, keep us going for now. And, and we would like to continue to keep it going because really, it's the only way we're going to be able to stay in business going forward.
So, John, and board, by the way, I don't mean to monopolize the conversation, sorry. But I would imagine that this board would likely want to make sure that the public has an opportunity to weigh in, just to make sure that everybody really is as comfortable with this and it's gone as swimmingly as you report. So I know that Craig was actually very surprised that we approved a temporary site plan. He said, a site plan is a site plan, you approve it or you don't approve it. So he was actually very surprised at this construct that we worked with you on for the COVID situation. So, so I think it shouldn't really be an issue for this board, but I think we need to make sure that the public has their day. So I would, I would suggest that we have a public hearing in October just to give the neighbors an opportunity to speak up and let us know if there have been any situations or bring anything to the public's attention that perhaps could be addressed. How does that sound?
I totally, totally agree. You know, I've, 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 I've used the new setup, and I think it's fantastically good. And I would have personally no problem extending it. But I would really want to know that there aren't butters or neighbors or other folks that don't share, you know, my optimism about how well it seems to be going. And, yeah, I would like, I would like a public hearing on this.
So just so I understand, then, what you're, what Back Bar is requesting is continuation of what we approved the last time. But now, you know, hopefully going to, you know, not be as big a menace as it is now. A win that will end, but hopefully someday it is the menace that it is now. But what you're suggesting, John, is that this be continued, you know, past the COVID era.
Permanently, Laura, they're asking for a permanent site plan.
I mean, that's the only thing that I would like to consider and, you know, re-read the application yet again, just to see what that would mean when, you know, we're able to function, you know, the, you know, semi-way that we used to.
Well, there's, occupancy rate wouldn't change, right? Even if, even if COVID was over, they're-
On the inside, we would reopen inside. And, you know, we would then have the capacity to seat more people, but the number of people outside wouldn't change.
And you'd have the capacity to spread them out. Better now.
We spread them out pretty good now. People do, you know, I feel very comfortable there. I don't go inside anywhere else. That's the only place that I ever go inside is under that tent. I do feel comfortable there. A lot of people do seem to. You know, we, we have no plans right now to put up tents on the, on the north side at all. We, our plan is actually to stop serving probably, you know, right around New Year's beforehand. And we don't anticipate that, that people are going to want to be outside in the cold rain and snow necessarily unless they have to. We do have the tent over the rear portion, so we'll keep that open. And hopefully, we'll be able to open the interior at some point in the next year. But the outside north portion is really, we just want to be able to keep it open in the nice weather. You know, pending anything that we might do there that would be of a more substantial nature, like building something. But that would obviously go through all the different reviews and processes that the code departs.
Right. Okay, board, so in the interest of time, I hate to keep saying that, but we've still got some things we need to accomplish. May I have a motion to open a public hearing on this at our October meeting?
So moved.
Thank you, Clark, do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Larry, Linda.
Hey, John.
Yes.
Teresa.
Yes.
Laura.
Yes.
Clark.
Yes.
Larry.
Yes.
Yes.
Betsy.
Yes. All right, John, we will see you then next month.
Thank you very much.
Thanks very much. Okay, 57 to 59 North Front Street, a site plan application from Kite's Nest to build a nonprofit Ilumocinary Educational Greenhouse, Kaya and crew. This, just for you all to know, board, we did approve a very similar site plan for Kite's Nest. They have made some slight adjustments to the location of their greenhouse and head house. And that's why they're back before us tonight. So I'm not sure who from the team, Mariana, are you taking this?
I'm, this is Caleb here, hold on, let me, I'm hiding behind my, my wife's, Alex Kendall's Zoom profile, I apologize there.
Okay, but your name is Caleb?
Caleb, yep.
Okay, thank you.
Hi.
Hi. So Caleb, love for you to walk us through quickly what you're doing, why it's different than what we approved prior, that would be helpful.
Sure. So I think you, you did a fair summary at the outset. This is a site plan that was submitted at the end of last year and was approved for a greenhouse and head house, which is a sort of supporting flex space adjacent to the greenhouse. The square footage of the structure changed slightly, just under 200 square feet larger this go-around. And then the position of the, of the structure on the site also changed, shifted to the south. And the only other notable change is the routing of the building utilities, which previously had crossed the City of Hudson Department of Sanitation easement on the, on the eastern portion of the, of the site. And now we're connecting two utilities on Dock Street to the north of the site.
Gotcha. So, board, do you all have questions about this application? I know some of you weren't on the board when we reviewed and approved this last year.
Oh, I wasn't there, right.
So Teresa, do you have questions?
Well, I wasn't at, on the board, so-
That's okay, you have questions now.
How many changes, if you're talking about four? Are there major changes?
It's the-
Can you see the, this, get it up on the screen so that, and it got to us what you're-
Sure.
I mean, we-
Yeah, a screen share would be really helpful, Caleb.
Yes, give me a second, I apologize.
Thank you for the right words, Betsy.
Three of us were not on the board when this project was previously, so we don't know what you're talking about.
Thank you, Larry.
So you all have reviewed the site plan that was submitted?
Yes.
With the application- With the application and you, they did show us how the building was shifted a little bit on the site, that it was a little bit larger, that it went a little further to the south. That was noted on the site plan, I'm quite sure.
Well, I could not print it, print them, you know, and I looked at them, but I don't know what I'm looking at. Puts it up, telling me what I'm looking at. No.
Okay.
And if anyone has questions, this is Kaya. If anyone has questions about the nature of the building or the use, you know, I'm here to represent Kite's Nest and the purpose of the building. So Caleb is the architect and can answer the, the more technical questions.
So Caleb, why don't you walk the Board through sort of a quick one paragraph on what it is you're trying to accomplish here? That would be helpful.
Yeah, sure. So if anyone's familiar with the North Front Street Community Garden that Kite's Nest has run for the past seven years, we have, we own two parcels on either side of North Front Street, down near the old Fergery Fish and Check. Here's the wastewater treatment plant.
Yeah.
And the greenhouse is, the, sorry, the guard, the community garden is on one side, the side closest to the river. And then there's, we own a long, narrow strip of land on the other side of the street. Right now, it's just an empty lot. It's basically been used for the, for, you know, prior to our use, the plastic factory next door just cut through, like, use their trucks to cut through there. And it really has just been a barren lot for many, many, many years. So we have been, you know, slowly restoring and fixing up the site. We right now run a small compost, community composting operation on that lot. And we have a storage container for our garden equipment. So the plan is to build a, a small educational greenhouse that will be both educational and also help to produce more food for the community garden and for the community at large. So we'll be able to grow longer into the season, you know, in, on either end of the growing season. And we currently employ teenagers as staff, community, neighborhood teenagers as staff in our garden program. So they will be the ones working in the greenhouse and producing organic plants, using it as an educational space where school groups can come through and learn about growing and biology and botany and ecology. It's, we, the greenhouse design that we have is, we have put a lot of effort into planning this greenhouse because we've designed the most energy efficient greenhouse that we really could, could possibly find or develop. So that it's going to be really minimal impact, very little consumption of energy. And so there's the greenhouse is one side of it, and then on the backside, there's a sort of supportive room space for storage and kind of like gathering space that's not in the greenhouse. Attached to it, we call it the headhouse. And then a small bathroom. So this will allow us to expand our programming, our garden programming on the site, our educational programs and our teen employment.
Kaya, is, is my screen, and, and everyone else for that matter, is my screen visible to?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. So would it be helpful, maybe I'll start with the previous application, which, uh, which is this tab here. So the, the development pertains to the eastern parcel of the, of the site. Kaya had mentioned that, that Kite's Nest owns these two parcels. And, uh, and the greenhouse will be on the eastern, the eastern side here. The previous application had the, uh, the building shifted slightly to the north of the site. But with our emergency access here on the northern side off of Dock Street and, uh, and then the headhouse adjacent to the greenhouse to the north there. The updated site plan, which I'm pulling up here, shifts that same combination of structures to the south. The headhouse is slightly larger, about 200 square feet larger to accommodate a sort of entry and then some, some space inside the building for mechanical equipment serving the, the greenhouse and that, that headhouse. Uh, and then that in turn has a, uh, has an impact on the, uh, the fill that we're proposing to bring the structure, which will be installed at grade level, um, up above the 100-year flood plain. So it slightly changes the profile of that re-grading of the site for, I should say, the addition of, of fill to the site rather than re-grading. Uh, and then the utilities are running, as you see, the SW and E here are running off of the north side of the site. Um, and there's a, this 30-foot utility easement that has to do with the wastewater treatment facility on the other side of Dock Street to the north of the, of the site.
Just to get my bearings right. Are you that garden by the, this brick house on Front Street by the river going towards the waste plant?
Yeah.
Is that the garden there you're talking about?
Yes.
Okay. So I just, was that, this, I can't.
Yeah, the garden, the garden would be in this sort of quadrant here on the other side of the, of, uh, North Front Street.
Okay, which one are we talking about? The one that exists? I'm thinking about the one that exists now?
Yeah, that's what he's talking about. When he said this would be the garden here, he's saying, this is the garden. This, this is the existing garden on the, on that side of the street where Caleb's cursor is. And then.
This one, oh, oh, okay, over on the left?
Yeah, so like on the river side.
Right, so now you want to build the greenhouse where?
On the other side of, of Front Street, in the empty lot.
I've never noticed a lot though.
Yeah, there's nothing really there right now. It's sort of, there's, there's some tall trees and then just a kind of empty gravel lot. It's been empty for decades. Yeah.
I'm trying to use my annotation tools to, to see if I can, uh, mark out where the garden is, just for reference, but.
Caleb, could you zoom in a little bit? Um, I don't think we.
Sure.
I mean, if you sort of center it and zoom in a bit, it might be easier. So now we've sort of lost Dock Street. But you see, I think, can you all see better now?
Yeah.
Yeah, I can see it. I'm just trying to figure it out where it is in Hudson.
And see where the big brick building is?
That's on the side, yeah.
That's the big building that's still down there, the old factory.
So that, so this parcel is opposite the brick building?
Yeah.
Exactly.
Yeah, if you were walking down the steep hill on Front Street, like going towards Fergery, the garden and the brick building would be on the left side and the proposed site for the greenhouse would be on the right side. Before you get to Dock Street, before you get to the corner.
So Kite Nest is already a nonprofit organization?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, we're a, we're a youth organization. We run after-school programs and leadership programs.
Right.
We've been around since 2012.
And most of your money is made through donation?
Yeah.
So you have a 501(c)(3).
Yes.
Betsy? Is there a picture of what this looks like?
Yeah, uh, we've got a elevation drawing here.
There we go.
Can someone live there?
No, it's not residential.
If you're, if you're, if you're a plant, you can happily live there.
Give me some worms.
Betsy, since this has already been approved by the Board, what's the nature of, of our discussion today?
It's cited slightly differently, Larry, and it's 200 square feet larger. So, so the slight, the site plan has been slightly adjusted and they did the right thing by coming back to us.
Great.
Yeah. You get a gold star, you guys. I loved this project when it came to us before. I love it still. Maybe I love it even more because it's even bigger.
What, what is that? Is that like a polycarbonate? Is that what it is? What is, what am I looking at?
Yeah, so as Kaya was saying, the, the greenhouse structure itself, which is on the right here, is, is built to be what's considered a, a high-efficiency greenhouse, which means that the, the walls that are oriented and the ceiling that are oriented south, um, that are designed to, uh, for solar heat gain are made out of polycarbonate. And then the other walls on the north side and then, uh, the flank, sort of half of the east and west walls are made out of insulated metal panels that have a very high R-value and therefore minimize heat loss, uh, in the winter. So in this drawing, you, the, uh, the door is into the greenhouse itself, which is from grid line B to A. The, the door is inset into that higher value metal, insulated metal panel. And then these two windows are set into the polycarbonate.
Got it.
And then on the left, uh, the headhouse that we're adding on to the, uh, to the greenhouse as a sort of support space will be made out of the same, uh, metal cladding as the, um, the high R-value walls of the, of the greenhouse.
And then those windows are glass windows, the ones that you can see through. But like, um, triple paned or something like that.
Do you all have any more questions about this project?
Not me.
No? Um, because I, I don't personally see any reason for a public hearing on this. The changes are so minimal. So I, if you all are good with this, I would be very happy if we approved this application tonight.
Sounds good.
So do I have a motion to approve this application?
I give you a motion to approve this.
Lisa, thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thanks, Steve. Um, okay, Linda?
John?
Yes.
Teresa?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
Aura?
Yes.
Dee?
Yes.
Betsy? And Larry?
Yes.
All right.
Thank you all very, very much. I love this project. Good luck with it and keep doing what you do so well.
Thanks so much, all of you. And I just want to make it clear, everyone is always welcome down at the garden. It's a publicly, publicly accessible space. The door, the gates never lock, so if you ever want to just come get a sense of the site, you're all welcome to.
Thank you. Thanks very much. Good luck, Kaya.
Thank you, everyone. Thank you.
Okay, um, Toolbox, are you guys still here? Edward, I do see you.
I'm here.
There you are. Um, we've sort of caught up a little bit, so, um, uh, Board, I want to introduce you to Edward and Susannah. I'm not so sure if Suzanne is on, but, um, they are here with a project that they will be bringing to us. They do not have a site plan drawn yet. Um, and this is an application for a project that they're working on in conjunction with Basilica that I wanted you to know about and they want you to know about. So take it away.
Sure. Um, well, it's remarkable. It will actually bear a lot of resemblance to what I just saw from Kite's Nest. So I think we should coordinate with Kite's Nest, um, in the future, but, uh, let me show you what we're working on. So, um, I'm, I'm gonna share my screen if that's okay.
Please do.
So, um, I'm an artist and a professor at Syracuse University in the process of moving to Hudson. I bought a house, but I can't move because of COVID. You have a nine-year-old son, so we're kind of marooned here for the moment, but we'll be moving next summer. And, um, we have a significant seat grant to do a project in Hudson called Toolshed. And the mission of the project is to gather and share tools for livable futures. So there's a lot, lot of community resiliency parts of this project. It's arts-based, but it's also has a strong educational component. And one of the facets of this project is a garden plan. And Basilica has invited us to develop this garden on part of their lot that's currently unused. So what you're looking at right now is a preliminary drawing that takes into account some conversations that we've had with about a dozen organizations in town, representatives in these organizations about what might be wanted, desired, as, in terms of a garden, in terms of potential collaborative programming spaces. So this is a diagrammatic representation of some of the things we heard. And I'm going to zoom in on one aspect of this drawing that is further along in terms of its development, including, uh, we have a funding commitment for it. It happens to be a greenhouse. So question mark whether or not it makes sense to kind of maybe collaborate with Kite's Nest instead of building two greenhouses, I'm not sure. But we do have funding for this. So, um, do you, is everyone see where we're looking at? This is Basilica here. This shape here is the main building at Basilica. This building is actually where Kite's Nest is currently headquartered, and there's a space back here called the Back Gallery. This larger rectangle here is the warehouse where Hudson Brewery is. And in this plot of land, it's a kind of tapering triangle that runs alongside, um, the railroad tracks. Are you guys getting noise? Can you hear me okay? Because I have someone annoying along.
No, we're all right.
Okay. I can move inside. It was bad. So this lot right now, um, is, is more or less empty. There's Japanese knot we're growing on it. There's cars that park here every once in a while. This, this part right here that, where you see these triangles, um, is currently a solar array. So that's an already installed solar array that, that Basilica uses as part of its energy source. We would end up using that solar array. It's kind of a, a pre-built pavilion in a drawing I'll show you in a second. So this is, this is, um, kind of overview of where we are. This is a, a representation of kind of the different areas that we're thinking about in the garden, particularly in terms of public access. So when we spoke to community members, leaders of different organizations, it seemed like one of the things that came up continually was a desire to have more public gathering spaces in Hudson. Effectively a park. And so the pink area that you're seeing is the area that would always be open, freely open at all hours for people to gather in. The area that's in purple would have a fence, but it would be accessible, so you could walk through that fence. It's mostly an animal barrier. And the area in back, um, would be more of a production zone where we actually produce, say, dyes or food or medicinal herbs that would have a higher fence and be more locked. So what I'm zooming in on here and where we would probably want to bring a more, um, formal, uh, site plan to the planning board is this building that we're looking at here. As with Kite's Nest, this is, this is proposed as a greenhouse, um, but more of an active workshop and education area than just a greenhouse. These other shaded spaces you're seeing here are more speculative. These are things that we heard need for, but we don't have the funds yet to build, so that's why they're in lighter gray. This, we feel like we have the funds to build. And so the phase we're in now is really just, um, a taking what we're hearing, thinking about the funding that we have and, and, and drawing out the volumes for the space and thinking about how it would be used. We would then go into a phase very soon where we would hire an architect and actually draw up a site plan and formalize this. Just to zoom in a little bit further. This is, this is a currently existing, um, thing on the Hudson, uh, Basilica Hudson property right now. It's, it's called a biodigester. And basically it takes food waste and converts it into both fertilizer and gas. And right now it's producing fertilizer, but it's not doing anything productive with the gas. So the gas, which is a methane, which is a pretty bad, you know, uh, greenhouse gas, it's just, it's being burned off into the atmosphere. So we want to capture the gas and the fertilizer from this biodigester, convert it, which would happen in this building here, into power and heat for this greenhouse structure here. So in the greenhouse, there would be a workshop area where we would, um, bottle the fertilizer. There'd be propagation tables where we would grow, um, seedlings and plants that could later be planted. There would be also these effluent containers which are the fertilizer. So we would be demonstrating in a, in a vertical garden growing area over here, and then a composting toilet. So we would be demonstrating these kind of ecological techniques or practices within this space. So it's an education workshop space. This is one of our early renderings of kind of the feel of this space. So you can see the sense of the zones that we're talking about. So this is that solar array up here. There would be a gathering space here. Basilica is doing, redoing their entire landscaping, so that would be part of this project. And then there'd be a small fence here and access to the space behind here. So.
So that's looking, so the L&amp;B warehouse is on the right in that picture and the truck's on the left?
Correct, yeah. So you're looking here
So down the triangle?
Seeing east. Yeah, down the triangle, essentially east away from the river. And then the warehouse is here. And this is a solar array that already exists. This is that biodigester I talked about, which is already in this container. So this already exists, but it's in a different place. So we would move it here. And then the rest of this structure is about capturing that energy from the biodigester for productive uses. So and then this diagram is just representing the kind of educational value that we see in this building and the processes that we would be demonstrating in it. So it's showing food waste coming from Basilica and other restaurants into the biodigester, gas and fertilizer going back into productive growing and then products, you know, items from the garden re-entering the ecology and economic system in town.
Fascinating project.
Thank you.
I have a question.
Yeah.
Quick question, just about. I mean, I know this is very preliminary and I thank you for coming before us early. It seems like a great project. Do you have any sense what the occupancy would be? Like peak occupancy?
In the, in the, in this structure here?
In the, just the general, the public spaces, that structure, et cetera?
Oh, yeah. I don't know about the outdoor space. In the indoor space, I think we're thinking about 12 people in here, maybe 12 to 15. It's about a 540-square-foot area, but there's also lots of things going on in it, like this toilet's taking out a chunk. So we haven't done complete studies of this, but we're hoping to get about 12 people in here, like the kind of people that would come in, maybe be like a middle school class or something like that or a workshop that would be limited to 12 people. And these spaces would be more open and allow more people in them. But again, we need to raise funds for these spaces.
Right.
Can you zoom out a little bit?
Sure.
So the, you know, the warehouse has, well, it has a brewery now, which is currently not operational right because there's some rule problem. But that's, you know, that's, there are people there. You also have people coming in and out of the doors to some of the vendors along that, let's call it north edge of the warehouse. And it seems to me that you've got a very long fence that runs the entirety of that edge of their property.
Yeah.
And that seems like, in a way, I mean, I understand property has to be valued and, you know, maintained.
Yeah.
But
We are not in control, a tool shed is not in control of the fencing decisions. The property owners are, which is Basilica Hudson. So I agree with you, Larry. Right now, there is a planned entrance, pedestrian entrance on this part right here. So this is showing as if there's a fence going all the way along, but I think there's a plan for an entrance. I wouldn't mind there to be more access from this side personally, but that's not currently the plan.
I understand why you, you know, would need to control access, but I also think that there's, you know, a potential in creating public space alone there.
Agreed. Agreed. I think that there's a balance that needs to be struck between the desires of the property owner, desires of the project and the desires of the community. And, I mean, there is, right now, this access is unfettered through here. And a lot of people just park their cars willy-nilly in this space. And that would be a problem, particularly controlling vehicle access. So I would like to see perforations in this fence that invite pedestrian access. But I do see a point in controlling vehicular access, particularly if we're going to be programming in here so that the vehicle access is controlled into this backspace here and limited. The idea is that there'd be parking for this facility back here and that we would not, we would stop using these areas as parking. This area here, you can see where my cursor is, that's intended for the truck that serves the horse. So that's where the food waste would come in and there's a truck for it to go out. And so we would like to keep this vehicle access pretty much exclusive to the truck and keep this area back here as parking and then further beyond it.
And is there an existing, so you have a vehicle crossing over the track? It's already there now?
That's right. This is an entryway in here. Yeah. That wouldn't change. There would still be access here. So I don't know how much that can be controlled, but yeah.
It looks like there's a gate or something to
This way here?
Yeah, right there.
Yeah, so that, what that is here, let me zoom in on that. So that is part of the more speculative aspect. So we've been in discussions with another group about working with the Hudson Area Library to produce a lending library of tools, like a tool library in town. And that's looking very promising. And it's not clear right now how much of that programming would be at the library itself and how much would be here in the garden. But this building here, which is in the shape and dimensions of the container, is conceived of as that lending library. But it would be mobile, so it would be on a trailer. And the idea is that this gate would allow us to come in here, get this lending library, take it out and move it out of this area and towards where it's needed. So we could do community programming with this mobile unit.
When you say tools, what type of tools? Like gardening tools or house-building tools or?
Well, I think the idea is to start with gardening tools, at least as far as we're concerned. But we're in discussions with the library about that right now. So they've been funded by a group to create what's called a resiliency hub that has tool lending as part of its programming. But I think there's a lot of logistics to work out there, liability logistics and, you know, how you check your things in and out. But the basic idea is that you'd be able to reserve the tools at any time, but then come get them at certain limited hours, say, on Saturday, and then return them. So starting with gardening tools, but maybe expanding to other types of tools.
So Board, we are kind of at the limit of our time here because we have a few more things we need to do before we have to give way to the Common Council at 7:00. So Edward, I love, this is really exciting. I love that you came to us early. And Board members, if you think of things that you might want Edward to know about, things that you have questions about, by all means, you can, I have his contact information and we can get in touch.
Yeah, thank you, Betsy, for commenting us early in the process. It's really helpful for us to get to know you. It's really terrific, thank you.
Absolutely. And thank you for our crazy schedule today. I know that when you all are ready, you'll come back with a great site plan and we look forward to that today.
Quick question. When would be expected for full site plan?
I think not for another several months. Maybe at the earliest four months, I would think. We have some work to do. But maybe three, but yeah, somewhere in there.
Out of curiosity, thank you.
All right. Thanks a lot. Let's see, I'm getting back to the agenda here, I think. Review and approve the minutes of July 14th and July 27th. Did you all have a chance to look at those?
Yes.
Are there any changes? No, okay. Do I have a motion? Well, we'll do these one at a time, I think. Oh, sorry, I just lost my, just lost what I'm doing. Or are you comfortable approving them both? Did anyone have any comments on either of those?
One is July 14th. Oh, and the other one was for the short, okay. Got it, I see.
Whatever, for the quickie short meeting.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I like the way we got them. Before, I had to go to the city website to get them. So can we get them like that all the time?
If I remember to send them to you. Or Linda, perhaps you could?
Can you, right, can Linda do it?
Yeah. I think what we usually do is Linda sends them to me first for the initial edit and then we can send them out to all of you so that you have them in advance.
Yeah, they were right there on the same website. You didn't have to go to another website to get them. I mean, am I the only one going to the city website to get them?
Probably.
No, I am.
Yeah, I am the only one?
I get them in my, I get them in email.
I don't. I was going to the city website to get them.
I can get them from the website.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I never saw them in the email.
Emails, the emails hard to navigate.
All right. We'll keep trying to get them to you in a timely manner. So do I have a motion to approve the minutes of July 14th and July 27th, 2020?
So moved.
Thank you, John. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Laura. Linda?
Hey. Betsy?
Yes.
Yes.
Larry?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Laura?
Yes.
Teresa and John?
Yes and yes.
All right. We have some bills to approve. The first is an invoice from Rodenhousen, Chale and Polidoro. This is to get Victoria paid for work that she has done in June and July for a total of $2,803.50. I looked over this carefully. I think it looks really good to me. I don't know if you all want to look at these things or if you trust me. How do you want to handle these bills?
I trust you. We trust you.
I trust you.
I trust you.
I would like to know in general, if ever her bills have more than one escrow account that is entailed, how it's apportioned.
It would, she's very specific. Like by the 15 minutes, she's very specific. This was talking to John Privatara about Colaruso. This was talking to Ryan Whites about, you know, she's, her bills are very, very specific.
Right.
Yeah. So it's all, it'll all be portioned out. For instance, if she's looking at anything, what she does a resolution for?
What I meant though, oh, sorry. What I meant that I apportioned was if she, if in the future, there's a bill that has 1,200 for a hotel and two grand for a housing development that we know, do you want, you know what I mean? That we know that what projects are, the fees are?
We have to know that, Larry, because that's how the bills are paid out of escrow.
Right.
But we need to know exactly, or I at least need to track with the city treasurer exactly who's getting paid out of what escrow account.
Got it.
And then we also watch as the escrow goes down if it needs to be refilled.
I think what Larry's saying is that, I think Larry, you're saying, when you present this to us, could you break it down? This much went to this project, this much went to that project.
That's what I'm saying, yes.
Okay, yes, I absolutely will. In the case of the bill that came to us, it was all Colaruso.
Good. We only have 10 minutes, guys.
Yeah, I know. So do I have a motion to approve payment?
Yes.
Laura, do I have a second?
I second.
Thank you, Larry. All right, we'll make this quick. Board, do anybody say no, nay? Are we all in agreement?
We're all in agreement.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Then the other is a big invoice for engineering from Barton and La Judas. This will also be applied to Colaruso Escrow. It's for $5,268.75. This was for Ryan and the road, the guy that looked over the traffic study. And then their senior vice president, Don Fletcher, who oversees the whole thing to make sure that we understood all the elements of that traffic study. And this also breaks their time down into 15-minute increments for all the work they did. I'm looking at the dates. It's through August 8th and it starts on, going backwards, 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 July 23rd.
Okay.
So do I have a motion to approve this payment of $5,268.75 out of the?
I've got a question. Have they presented to us their assessment of that report?
No, they will next month. Colaruso has not been back on the agenda since we got the traffic study.
So we're going to pay them, but we haven't actually seen what they've done with?
We haven't seen the results of their work, but I think we, that's just, that's not their.
Yeah, no, I'm okay with that.
So do I
Sure.
Approve the Barton and La Judas bill?
I'll move.
Thank you, Teresa. Do I have a second?
Second.
John, everybody say aye?
Aye.
Anybody, any ayes? Okay. Committee reports. John, is there anything that we must, anything burning that we have to know at the IDA?
No. Basically, it's just dealing with our own procedural stuff. And there's a public hearing coming up. I'll have to send out a note on the, I think, 16th of September for that 620 Union Street property, so.
For the pilot?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. All right. And then as far as HCDPA is concerned, actually, we're getting quite a lot done. There's a, the housing study that was done in 2018. We've looked at that. We're talking, we're working with the city to put together a proposal to hire someone to figure out exactly what we need in this town in terms of affordable housing.